Good evening, I'd like to call to order this the budget workshop for Tuesday, May 1st, 2018. Please rise for a moment of silence. We'll have the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, are you sure you want to call the roll?
I'll give it a try. Fishbein, Laffin, Leturno?
Here.
Maroon?
Here.
Morganstein?
Here.
Chortel?
Here.
Testa? Sandri?
Here.
Chairman Savoni?
Here. So between illnesses and other commitments, we do have a small council tonight, although we do have a quorum. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to go through the departments, and if as a result of those in attendance, you don't have questions, I'm going to give you the option to not stay. Anyone have questions for planning and zoning? Okay. Zoning Board of Appeals, you're here anyway. Health Department. No questions for the Health Department? You don't have to stay. Park and Recreation, yes, we have a question. Personnel Pensions, we have questions. Risk Manager. Nothing for risk, but we're not done with you yet. Insurance? Nothing for insurance. Property and Casualty? Nothing for that. Employee Insurance? Okay. I guess you have to stick around, or is that not you? I think, Mr. Tribber, I think we canceled all your departments. And then Pension Funds? We do not have questions. So we will skip Zoning Board of Appeals, Risk Manager, Insurance, Property and Casualty, and Pension Funds. With that, we will go right to Planning and Zoning, page 57. Good evening, Ms. Hand.
Good evening.
Do you want to tell us anything about your department, or just go right to the grilling?
No, it's pretty much virtually no change from last year. We saved $650 that we didn't need this year for training. That was used this year for our CEO to get her certification, but other than that, no big changes.
Thank you. Counselor Morganstein, you had a question?
Yes, hi. Nice to see you again tonight. So my question is couriers. When I was on Planning and Zoning, we certainly get big packets at times, and there seemed to be, sometimes it was the police, sometimes it was a really big truck, sometimes it was a smaller vehicle. I'm just curious, I would think that you've looked at your various services, but just to learn a little bit about, we have a few different ways of doing it and how we're cost-cutting there.
Sure. It used to be that the town planner did it, so I used to do it. When we reduced staff and I took over as town planner after a couple of years, we decided it would be more cost-effective to pay a courier service to do it than to have me, and more time-effective than to have me do it. So we hire out to a courier service. The police doesn't deliver our packets, they do, I think, for you guys, for town council. So it's either, it used to be me, now it's a private courier service, and I think just depending on who it is from the service that day, it's the different size of the truck.
Different vehicles, all through the same service?
Yeah, and we did bid out with, well, we got quotes from three different agencies, and they were the least expensive one.
And so electronically, most of the people are getting their minutes electronically, they are offered an option, but these packets are certainly large packets. Do you have any sense from other towns that there's any different way besides a courier?
The only other way, most towns where I worked before I worked here, we had them delivered. The other options would be mailing, which I think would end up being more expensive and just takes too long, as you know, it's time-sensitive, so sometimes we're getting things in the morning that packets are going to go out, and that's always the Friday before a Monday meeting, so it really has to be that day. The only other option I'm aware of that some towns do is if the board members or if their meeting room has access to, has more digital access and they can, because really the issue is the big maps, we can't scan those in and email those to everybody. Plus, when you get to the meetings, you want to have access to everything right in front of you, so unless we had more digital access and a way to view the bigger maps digitally, that's the only other way I'm aware of. And a few towns have moved in that direction, but most of them still do hard packets.
Okay. Yeah, no, that makes sense, and yeah, to pay you your salary and take you away from your duties to be delivering makes absolutely no sense. Okay, and then I guess the only other question I had, education, I would presume that you have trainings and meetings with other like people. What about the commission?
The commission, they do have options for some trainings, so we do cover those if the commission, there are a few things that come up throughout the year. One commissioner, so I'm a member of APA, which is the American Planning Association, that's where a lot of, I have access, that's where I get most of my certification through, and that's also where I have access to information and research and things of that nature. I attend some of those conferences. I actually just attended and was given the opportunity to present about a project that Wallingford is doing at one of the conferences. The commissioners also have the option of having a commissioner membership. We do have one commissioner that takes advantage of that, so we do cover that with APA. And like I said, there are a few other trainings that come up also with ZBA that we provide them the opportunity to attend if they want throughout the year. And some of them are great, I mean, some of them, especially for new commissioners and new board members, it's a really important, and even for us, I mean, it's important for me to stay up to date with different things that are going on and different directions, planning are going in, different technologies, things like that.
Sure, yeah. Great, that's all I have. Thank you.
Any other questions for this department? And there were none for Zoning Board of Appeals, correct? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep. All right. Next is Parks and Recreation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, just to remind us who you are for the record.
John Gollak, Director of Parks and Rec.
Michelle Bjorkman, Superintendent of Recreation.
Do you want to start with an introduction?
If I can.
Sure.
Good evening. In your package, you should have received a cover letter, as I do every year, for budget, highlighting some of the decreases in our budget, but the most important thing is I just wanted to highlight some of the narrative, the kind of things that, projects that aren't in this budget proposal, but just making you aware of considerations down the road. Obviously, the first one is community pool in the bathhouse. The second one is the Grand Street Park playground upgrade. The Pregman Park Quad. West Side softball backstop and fencing. Field fencing needs updating and possible replacement. Believe that was in Public Works budget proposal this year. Parking lots at Community Lake, Woodhouse 1 and 2, need to be updated. I believe that was in Public Works budget proposal. Pyre Park, the fence in the basketball court. That basketball court footprint that's there now, it used to be a tennis court, so it's much larger than a basketball court. We've been, I've been getting requests from young adults that are playing roller hockey that are utilizing our tennis courts, one side spanning the three courts, using the fence as one barrier and the tennis nets as another barrier. So looking around and trying to create a solution without costing a lot of money was to put up a fence that used to be at Pyre Park when it was a tennis court, a four-foot fence, so that would be a suitable area for them to do their roller hockey activities and still play basketball. There's more than enough room. And then the other last item is the multi-use court, if you're familiar with West Side Eagles, Memorial Park, there's like an all-sport court that the neighborhood uses extensively for soccer. They'll string up their own volleyball standards and play volleyball all summer long. The surface is in really rough shape, and I'd like to see it get done if we can. And I believe that was maybe in Public Works proposal as well. That's it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Chortel.
How's the pool? No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. Just, I just have one question about online registration. Can you just talk a little bit about that? And I've been following your minutes, and I know that it's something you're looking at, and I'm just curious, I get questions on that from...
Sure. In our budget proposal this year, purchase professional services, software support, the department is looking to offer and to make available the use of a credit card, point of sale at the window and online. Currently, our management software that handles all of our program administration and field and facility reservations handles... Let me just go through our narrative. I was going on a tangent there and lost my train of thought, but anyway. So we're looking to offer online registration through the software. The official payments is what the credit card company that the, or the service that the town utilizes now for tax payments and utility payments. We would like to, well, in speaking with the mayor, a bunch of meetings with Jimbo's, the controller, we haven't settled on the new agreement with them, but in my budget is the cost to make it happen. There's a one-time fee to official payments to make it as a drop-town menu item to select for Park and Rec payment programs if you're going to use your credit card. There's a one-time programming integration fee through MyRec, which is our software provider, to make their gateway compatible with official payments. And because of the volume of revenue that we do bring in on an annual basis, our current software cost is $38.75, it'll go up $1,000 on an annual basis. So those are $1,000 of recurring expense and $1,250 of a one-time expense.
Counselor Leturno.
Good evening.
Good evening.
John, with the credit card that you want to utilize, you're not, is there, so if somebody wants to buy pool tags with their credit card, is there going to be an up-charge for using the credit card?
So there's going to be a transaction fee at the time that we're, that we've been speaking with official payments, and certainly there's some more negotiations that have to go on with the controller's office. Right now, it's $1.75 per transaction.
On top of the, on top of the fee?
Correct.
Okay. So a pool tag is $15, if they use their credit card, it'd be $16.75. Okay. It just sounds like a lot of money, $1.75. I know as a merchant that, you know, the rates are a lot lower than that, so I think that might be something the town needs, if you're going to piggyback on the town's credit card provider, I think their rates are a little, not little high, they're very high. It's $1.75 for $15, that's a lot of money. But I, if it helps, you know, I believe in using the credit cards because that's what people use today. They use credit and debit, and very few people carry cash and very few people write checks. So, you know, if they have to, they have to, but it'll make it a lot easier and it's easier to track, plus you're not dealing with cash or depositing checks. Okay, that would be something I'd like to have you get back to us on as that proceeds. If you could send us a report on that, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Chairman.
Mayor, just on that point, at one time, we were using, allowing credit cards for tax payments. Because of interest rate fluctuations, the credit card company indicated the town owed them something like, I don't know, it was in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, and they wanted payment on that because they weren't making the money that they believed previously was coming through the flow. And the result was that we had to put more money in the bank in order for them to make interest on that, and for a period of time, that continued until that deficit was covered. And from then on, we are not in a position, I don't believe, to have the rest of the taxpayers paying for those who want to use a credit card, because significant amount of money can then be part of the fee for the credit card over a period of time. And like I say, it was hundreds of thousands of dollars. Now, these are smaller fees here, but it's small because it's a small amount as well. So to avoid that, you have to have the person who's using the credit card for the convenience of using the credit card, they pay the fee. But otherwise, it comes back on the town as an added expense, which, you know, I think is totally inappropriate to subsidize the use of a payment method.
How many years ago was that, Mayor?
This is probably...
Eighteen years.
That was eighteen years?
The original agreement was eighteen years, through my research.
That, I could tell you, things have changed dramatically, because when I started using credit cards eighteen years ago to what, accepting credit cards to what it is today, it's a whole different world. And they even have, I mean, it's, the costs are at a fraction because the market is so competitive. And if Wallingford is paying those kind of rates today, we're just getting taken to the cleaners.
Well, this is an indication, though, if it's $1.75 on a $15, that's an indication of where they want the fees to be.
Then I would look at a different, then definitely look at a different carrier then, because I review mine every three, as a merchant, every three years, the rates that I'm paying. And over time, I've changed because it's very, very competitive. There's even now, there's, you know, there's companies out there like that Square, you can swipe on the square, it's a flat rate. It's a flat rate. So there's a lot...
I think it's $4.50 to pay for, to use your credit card for electric bills.
Yeah, that's outrageous. That's outrageous. And that's something that this coming year, I really want to dive into because that is, I know as a merchant, what's out there. I deal with this all the time. And whether I'm selling electricity for the town or selling chandeliers in my store, it makes no difference. They don't care what you're selling. It goes by your average daily sale, and the more you do, the cheaper it is. That I do know. And I have pretty low rates, and I'm not Walmart, that's for sure. So something, something just to put on the horizon, and I can guarantee we will look at it this year. I'll put it on the agenda. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I have some experience using, well, accepting credit cards for my business and using credit card in my business, and I do use my credit card to advance client fees to state agencies, to the Superior Court, and to the Secretary of the State. And the processing fee there is anywhere, it varies anywhere from 3% up to 5%, so, and they add it on. So I don't know what the difference is with government from merchant processing, but certainly the state's vendor is not the cheapest on the planet either. So any other questions for Park and Rec? Counselor Morganstein?
Yes, hi. So let me just make sure I'm clear. So you would be considering this to be a fee for them using the credit card, the public would be paying the $1.75?
It's not, yeah, it's not me establishing the fee, it's official payment.
So I just, I think this discussion of how much they're charging is a bit irrelevant. My takeaway from the young families who want to be able to use the pool, and thank you so much for all the work that your committee has done and putting forward, is that the convenience, these are the people who, as John says, use their debit card or their credit card or everything for everything and are not used to getting in the car and going and paying a bill in person. And so $1.75 for people that shop at Amazon and people that, you know, do all of these things online enables them to not gather up the three kids and come up to the rec department and do all of that. So I have to commend you that getting this in line is very important. And I, from what I understand, the vendor that provides our computer services is opening up something that we have not previously used for our usage, and so I would think you're not looking to switch up anything, you want to stay with the computer and the finance people that you've been dealing with, and for an individual to pay their $15 fee and add $1.75 to it is nothing. So I think we will see much more tags bought, we'll see higher utilization.
We hope. We hope.
Yeah, well, I think we will. I mean, the amount of people that have really rallied around this issue is big, and yes, there's some of those people that are simply rallying because they don't want an important Wallingford place to go away, so some of those people have a pool in their own backyard, but they see the value to the camps that come there, the families that don't have access on their own, and I think we will. We just need to make it what you're working on making it.
It's an interesting study. We bring in close to a million dollars, and people are still via check, if you check with Jimbo's, or we could check in our office, it's about 700,000 still paying a check and only the balance in 280,000 in cash, but we are getting more and more frequent requests for the use of credit card. More than we have in the past.
Any other questions for Park and Rec? Oh, thank you, Counselor Maroon, sorry about that.
No worries, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So my question is more for the administration. So I see on page one of your, of your report, you have some capital requests that you're looking to do in the future, and then on page four, you have some capital items that you completed or are currently in process. I know the Education Department has some money that's been bonded for some capital expenses for school items, you know, school services, you know, elementary school has somewhere in the neighborhood 200, 250 students in it, so certainly playground equipment or items at a school would service that many students. I think some of these park improvements might be utilized by more than that number, you know, including people from all over town. I'm just wondering if there's any interest on the part of the administration in having a capital fund set aside where we would pay for things, items, not just to improve schools, but parks and so on? You know, we could have sort of a community discussion about what the priorities are, whether it be at a school or whether it be at a public park.
I'm not really understanding, when we have a project and it requires bonding, we do fund for it, and whether that, it can take several forms. One is a, an amount of money in a budget in a calendar year to accomplish it. Another would be a separate project that would have its own bond authorization, and the third is the capital non-recurring fund. So I think we're in the process of working on many of these on page four already.
Right. Now, my concern is, and obviously we're doing a lot of these, and my concern is more that education, you know, and obviously education is very important, I have, you know, kids in school. We've been bonding a lot of money or spending a lot of money to improve school capital improvements, and I just think that maybe some of these things, if we had a community discussion, would be more important than some of the items perhaps that we're doing on the schools. So I was just wondering if there's any, you know, interest in perhaps looking at the, when we look at the school capital improvements, maybe we include some of the other town, you know, there's other things in town that need to be maintained, there's some excellent items on this list, you know, maybe include some of those with some of the school items, or maybe supplant some of the school items with some of these.
Well, what we can do is, at the point we are undertaking a school project of some kind, we can make sure everyone is aware of the other projects that are also either in process or have been requested and are not quite ready to go. So everyone has the same information.
And I think we've been very generous with education, quite frankly. Now, you know, I'm not saying too generous, but I think we've been very generous with education, I think we just need to put some priority on some of these other, these other items.
Well, some of the actual, there are town projects that are occurring on school property. We've improved the baseball field at...
The Moran baseball field.
Go through some of the fields that we've improved. And by the way, the schools use many of our park facilities as well, so, John?
Yeah, there's a lot of field sharing going on, especially with the Sheen Athletic Program. Their fields need some help. The baseball field needs some help, the varsity softball field needs some help. I think the varsity baseball team in 13 games has played, out of their six or seven home games, one game there, they've been playing the majority of their games at West Side and practicing for their sub-varsity teams as well. The girls' varsity softball program and their JV program pretty much has been using Field 5 and Field 1 at Pregman Park as their home field. Our town engineer had met with Superintendent Deptula a year ago to make some improvements to the varsity field there, between $40,000 and $50,000, and it was not taken well. So the field's still, when we get any kind of significant rain, that field is out of commission for almost seven days, and then probably a few days after that as well. But as far as the joint fields, I mean, we did West Side Field a year ago, we did the Moran baseball field this past fall, it was completed. We're doing a multi-use field currently right now at the south end of Pregman Park, that's a town field.
John, is Dag Hammershold still on the schedule, or?
I believe that money from, I believe the money may be dwindling between West Side Field and the Moran Field became a bigger project than they anticipated. I'll have to check with Henry on that, but is that still? Oh, yeah, I mean, the lower Moran Field in the back, the girls' softball field, needs work, more of a fencing type of thing. The Moran softball field, I mean, the Dag softball field needs a lot of work, as well as the infield of the Jolai and baseball field.
So I guess my point is, there's a lot of sharing going back and forth, and between the little leagues and the girls' softball leagues and the schools, it's a constant process, and John has done a, the department has done a great job of responding to perceived needs. At the point, there was discussion about the girls', well, it'd be the girls' softball league, not a fast pitch, but the slow pitch. Losing their fields at Gaylord, we were making an effort to prepare for their presence again on the town fields. That hasn't happened yet, but there's been a lot of planning and...
A lot of moving parts.
No, and no disagreement, Mayor, and I think the department does an excellent job maintaining the fields, absolutely. I just think that, you know, the town buildings and town, you know, schools are town buildings first, right, and school lands are public lands first, so I just think that maybe we put them all on the... So I just think that maybe we put them all in the same bucket of priority. And we sort of look at, you know, whether it be education or non-education, it goes in the same list and we prioritize, you know, what's, what's the biggest priority, regardless of whether it's education or not.
Right, the other thing is, obviously, the leagues in the winter are using the gyms at the schools. Is that correct?
Our, our youth basketball program is utilizing the schools, the elementary schools and the middle schools for practice only. And all their games are, are taking place at the Park and Rec.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other questions for Park and Rec? Thank you very much for all of your work.
Thank you. Have a good day.
You too. So I guess we do not have a question for personnel options unless somebody other than Counselor Shortell did. And so the next department and last department is employee insurance. Good evening, welcome. And when you're all in place, please remind us who you are for the record.
Yes, thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here. Jim Hut, Town Human Resources Director.
Kurt Tribber, Risk Manager.
Rick Livingston, Assistant HR Director.
Thank you. Shall we just dispense to the grilling? Counselor Shortell.
There's no grilling. I'm not sure, it's a pleasure to be here, but, no, thank you. I'm happy to be here. I, first of all, I want to thank you, Mr. Hut, because I, I got my dates messed up. I was in Chicago two weeks ago, so I missed a few hearings and I thought I was going to miss this. So I didn't send you any questions. And then I realized through some correspondence that this was tonight. And I appreciate, you, you turned around my request really quickly and I apologize for the fire drill. And I appreciate the info. So I just have a few follow-ups on what you sent and I, you gave me great information. My first question is a basic question because I want to make sure I have my facts straight. If you combine the town and the board, we're looking at, what, like twelve-hundred employees or what's?
That's correct, approximately twelve-hundred employees.
Okay. Looking at the, the positions that were vacant, and I understand what you replied, you know, obviously, some of them are in the process, offers have been made, the exams are being taken, so they're, they're not all going to be vacant. I guess my only question on those positions, I don't know if I can ask this because it's not your, I guess I can ask it because it's, it's your.
Sure.
Around, there was one that I just wasn't clear. There was an executive secretary for Mr. Bose that was vacant since January. Do we, and it says ETA fulfilling at the controller's direction.
We.
Like half your department's like empty, isn't it, Jim? Like, I just, I'm just curious.
Are you, are you asking, it's just been filled.
Oh, okay, that's just.
Friday.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think, I think overall, I'm looking at your numbers. I was, I didn't realize our individual stop loss was at two-hundred-thousand. I thought, I know, I think we, I ask this every year and, and that's, you know, that puts us at, at some risk. I think a hundred thousand is more industry standard and, and I get why, you know, different companies, different employers do different amounts. But I just want to run a scenario by you and you can tell me if I'm, if I'm wrong. I look at our numbers and, so we have about, if you add up the town and the board, about nineteen million, nineteen and a half million dollars in health insurance. Maybe about a million of that, million, one-point-two million is administrative fixed costs based on the employees. So, so the rest of it is, is expected health insurance claims. It's eighteen million, give or take. And if, and, and we're funding, I'm really more making a point, you just have to tell me if I'm wrong. But we're funding at the hundred percent level, as you said in your memo. We're not funding at a hundred and twenty percent of aggregate stop loss. Correct, you, so, so that eighteen million is at, is at the hundred percent claim level, which means that we are on the hook in the aggregate for the additional twenty percent. If, if we, if, if people exceed those claims in the aggregate, we, we're on the hook for that, which is about two, two-and-a-half million dollars, basically. So that two-and-a-half million dollars, we, we have reserves, we all talk about the reserves. But that's, I don't think I, I never did the math before. I think I never really looked at exactly how much. But basically, we have to have that two-and-a-half million sitting there because that's on us. The stop loss doesn't pick that up until we, we, we hit that hundred and twenty percent. So I'll stop and you can tell me if I'm wrong or if I'm.
If you had any specific questions in terms of, I can, you know, find out from Milliman. They are the insurance consultant. But for all intents and purposes, you are correct. And we do need to have that twenty percent.
Reserve.
Reserve available, yes.
Right, yeah, I mean, and I think this was just, you know, there was a, an effort a year ago to cut this line in the health insurance. And I was, I was very vocal in my opposition, not even doing, not even saying what I'm saying now, just in, just philosophically, it bothered me. And then I looked at the numbers, I mean, you know, you're, the, the Wallingford actually, I mean, the, basically, it's a three percent increase.
Correct.
It was three percent last year. We're, we're actually running, our trend is pretty good, can saw things being equal. I mean, the industry trend is a lot higher. I mean, I work in the industry and you're looking at, I mean, trend varies by product mix. It's, it's not, there's no one trend really, but, but our, you know, most trends that you see from consulting houses nationally, eight percent, seven percent, nine percent. So Wallingford does pretty well. But I think again, that, that there's a twenty percent liability the town has that is not in that budget line, which is fine. We, we were able to, you know, and I think people need to understand that as we look at, you know, motion meetings and how to get to a zero, you know, zero tax increase. That's not just about cutting that line, it's about also having money in the vault, along with all the other reasons to have money in the vault, so.
Mayor. Yeah, just, and as you're aware, it's the ordinance that requires it to be structured that way. Our ordinance requires a twenty percent reserve. The other thing though is, the trend looks good, but obviously, the experience is the key. And right now, we have a fairly significant number of cases that are in the stop loss. So if, if, if they weren't, it would be a very different picture as far as what our trend looks like or what the experience is. So right now, other than the significant number that's in the stop loss, it, it seems to be below what you'd expect, but it's, it's totally whatever happens in a given year. I mean, you know that.
Right.
I'm just saying this for everyone.
Right.
You don't know when the claims are going to come in. And if someone has a, a need for the medical insurance, that's why it's there, so.
When I, when I started in the industry in nineteen ninety-five, you know, you, you look at, at stop loss and you'd look at high claimants. Usually, you know, you have transplants are high claimants. A newborn, a prematurely born baby and the NICU is a high claimant, you know, can't, some cancer cases. But it, the, the world has changed even in twenty years where you have these miracles, these, these drug therapies that, that extend life and they're, they're great. They're also really, really expensive. And, and there's all sorts of new therapies. And still, transplants and, and preemies and all the other things that never went away. And, yeah, I mean, the, the info, I mean, I, I felt like, and I don't know if you, I'd be curious what Milliman thinks. I mean, we, we have thirteen claimants that exceed the individual stop loss, which seemed a little, I mean, I don't know, in a group of a thousand, maybe that's normal. I'd, I'd have to look into that, but that's significant. And, and you can't predict, you could have twenty-six a year from now, from the thirteen. You have no, you know, if, if someone can tell me they can predict health, people's health a year from now, you know, that would be great. My last question. Sorry, that really was, that was more speech than a question, sorry. Just to talk about, you did, so the stop loss was part of the health insurance RFP from twenty fifteen. And I think you had said last year, you did explore unbundling that with Anthem and it was, you felt it was better to stay.
We had, Milliman did take a look, Steve, Steve May, our consultant, did take a look, not through an RFP, but he did look at one of the, the companies with the lowest stop loss and they wouldn't touch the town of Wallingford, so.
Okay, so that tells you something right there, they wouldn't, yeah. And Steve, yeah, Steve May, I, Milliman is highly credible too. And Milliman's a great consultant and very, they'll get you the best, you know, the best deal and the best arrangement. So that's, thank you for all your work and that's all.
Also too, if you, if you looked at the memo, we are saying that you can reduce the budget by.
Oh, yeah, I did, I did say, I did see that, that's right. We can, fifty-eight thousand, six fifty-seven. That, we'll call that the, the Shortell reduction.
Yeah.
Can we call it that? Could I? Yeah, thank you.
Go ahead. We're on that, okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, certainly.
But, Mr. Chairman, if I may, just to follow up on Councilman Shortell's discussion and point, you're absolutely correct. Because if we dip too much into that line item and we have a couple of bad years in a row, the ordinance actually requires us to build that back up to that twenty percent corridor, that twenty percent safety net, if you will. So if that ever happened, obviously, we hope it wouldn't. But if it did, that, any amounts that we would need to get that back up to twenty percent would be in Jim's line item that you're looking at in the budget in front of you. So it would be not only the expectation of what he's seeing from the, from the arithmetic, if you will, from the consultants, but also a factor to start building up that corridor.
So can I, can I just follow up on that? So you're saying the twenty, I just want to make sure, maybe I, I thought maybe I have it wrong. Is the twenty percent, so it's in that six-nine?
No.
It's not in, that's what I, oh, right, okay.
Twenty percent's on our balance sheet.
It's on our ballot, right, and we have to have.
That's correct.
That's what I thought, thank you.
Other questions for this department? Thank you, gentlemen, for all your hard work.
Thank you very much.
So I believe that does it for this evening. And if there is no further business on the agenda, a motion to adjourn is in order. Moved in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare this meeting adjourned.